Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Bellevue City Council meeting. It is Tuesday, November sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one, at six P. M. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I didn't get back to see the Boy Scouts, but if you guys want to come up front and lead us off in that, that would be awesome. Stand up front. And then if you would remain standing, if we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, if you'd remain standing for the invocation from Pastor Andy Cowp, Lead Pastor Bellevue Christian Center. Appreciate it. Thank you, Scouts.
All right. Well, thank you for the opportunity to be here. It's an honor. Let's go ahead and pray together. Father, we thank you for your goodness and your grace. And we just ask that throughout the remainder of this meeting that you would pour out your love and your grace on this time and on each individual that's here. God, we thank you for these leaders and ask that you would just give them wisdom as they guide our city with courage and with strength. And Father, we just ask that you would continue to unify each and every one of us as we move toward your mission for this city, God. We know that you are for Bellevue and I thank you for a, a team of leaders that is also for Bellevue. We love you. We ask all of these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Andy. And thank you, Scouts. You here observing tonight? Is that the official duty? All right. Glad to have you. I'll call the meeting to order. Susan, would you take roll call, please?
Councilman Stenson.
Here.
Councilman Cook.
Yeah, here.
Councilman McCaw.
Here.
Councilman Preister.
Here.
Councilman Burns.
Here.
And Councilwoman Welch.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. This meeting will be conducted in accordance with the Nebraska Open Meetings Act. A copy of that act is on the rear wall of the council chambers. Item five, approval of agenda consent agenda, claims and advisory committee reports. Item five A, approval of the agenda. Councilman Burns.
I move that we approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Burns, second by Preister. Comments or questions? Councilman Burns.
I move that we amend the agenda to remove items fourteen B and fifteen A as they were withdrawn by the applicant.
Second.
Motion by Burns, second by Preister to amend the agenda, removing fourteen A and fourteen B. Any comments or questions on the agenda amendment?
I, I thought it was remove fourteen B and fifteen A. Is that correct? Want clarification, please?
That's correct.
Did I? Foot flop this?
Mr. Burns made the appropriate motion.
Oh, okay, okay.
All right. So we have a motion by Burns, second by Preister to amend the agenda, removing fourteen A and fourteen B.
Fourteen B and fifteen A.
Is that the way you said it?
No.
Is that the way you wanna, you wanna change your motion?
Wait, did I?
Mr. Burns' motion is correct. It's.
I wrote fourteen A and B.
No, it's B and fifteen A. Fourteen B.
Okay.
Fifteen A. Fifteen A.
Okay, so that's where Miss.
This is a five. Fifteen A.
Where Councilwoman Welch was confused because that's what I said. So I'm gonna repeat that. So motion by Burns, second by Preister to amend the agenda, removing fourteen B and fifteen A. Any comments or questions on that? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Now I have a motion to approve the agenda by Burns, second by Preister, as amended. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item five B, approval of the consent agenda. Items marked with an asterisk are approved where this item is unless otherwise removed. Do I have a motion? Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Preister, second by Burns to approve the consent agenda. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Takes us to item seven, special presentations. Seven A is a proclamation declaring November sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one as Brandon Shute Day. Brandon was in a cross-country duel, and I believe it was with Burke, where he Brandon Shute, what did I say? Brandon Shute was, okay, Brandon Shute was in a cross-country meet against Burke and, or at Burke. And one of the, I think it was a sophomore from, was it Burke?
Yeah.
Actually fell and fell a couple of times, and I think Brandon had, had saw this, but anyway, he ended up kind of giving up on his own race and helping this young man from Burke. And it's just an incredible act of sportsmanship and compassion. And we like to think that's, that's, that's what we believe in here in the Bellevue community. And you represented us very well, and that's what this day is about. We have a, we already have a Be Like Frank, Be Like Frank Coomer Day, so it fits you as well. Be Like Brandon Shute Day, so. And I think Phil's got a little presentation of that of that event.
Before we do the proclamation, we'd like to show this short video that appeared on NBC News nationwide that kind of told a little bit more about Brandon's accomplishments. So if we could flip it up on the screen, if I can get it to work.
There's good news tonight about helping someone when they're down, even someone you've never met before. A reminder that we all might be able to find small ways to make a difference.
For these high school cross-country runners in Nebraska, this was make or break, the qualifying race for the state championships just over a week ago.
What were you hoping for going in, Brandon?
I was hoping for state, but I knew the competition we had was gonna be really tough.
Senior Brandon Shute from Omaha was running for the last time with his varsity team. Around the two-mile mark, sophomore Blake Servini from another Omaha High School passed Brandon.
I was running a pretty decent race, and then last like one K, my legs just started to hurt and my legs gave out in me.
Brandon saw Blake fall twice.
And then he got up, and I was like, wow, I have never seen that before. You know, usually when a runner goes down, he stays down. And the fact that he kept getting up was incredible to me.
But as Blake neared the finish line, he crumbled again.
I fell and I was like, oh, man, I don't know if I'm gonna be able to finish or not.
And then something exceptional happened.
When I saw him go down, I decided, all right, I'm gonna help him for the finish.
Brandon pulled his competitor to his feet. And together, side by side, they crossed the finish line.
Blake, I think it says a lot about Brandon that he even stopped.
Yeah, I would say it does. He didn't care about what place he got. He cared that he helped someone else.
He wanted to make sure you finished.
Yeah.
As soon as he recovered, Blake wanted to find the stranger who helped him. They met the next day as their moment was spreading online.
I thanked him a lot. Like, I really appreciate what he did and I'm not gonna forget that. I mean, there's always these little moments throughout the day where five seconds can make a change to somebody's life. You can always reach out. You can always help somebody.
They say the lesson is universal.
That was the most important race I've ever had in high school, probably ever. Like, it, it meant something. We may not go to the same school. We may, we may not be on the same team. We're all in this together.
That's awesome. Awesome coverage. Mom, Dad, an excellent job. I know you're very proud of them, so your whole community is proud of you too, so. Great job. And then that's just kind of the moral of that story, I think, is, you know, we can't always do something by ourself, so, but we can always do it together. So that's, that's awesome. Great message. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna read this proclamation from the desk here, but when I get done, I'm gonna meet you at the podium, and then I've got a little presentation. We want to present you with a gift, so. City of Bellevue, Nebraska, Office of the Mayor, proclamation, whereas Brandon Shute is a Bellevue East senior and a member of the Bellevue East High School Cross Country Team. And whereas Brandon was running in a meet on October fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one, and noticed an individual from the opposing team collapse. And whereas, without hesitation, Brandon stopped and helped Blake Servini from Omaha Burke to the finish line. And whereas, despite Brandon knowing this was his senior year and could be one of his final races, I just decided I was going to help him to the finish. And therefore, the city of Bellevue wishes to recognize the dedication and efforts of Brandon and for showing the Bellevue community what a true hero is. Now therefore, I, Mayor Rusty Hike, do hereby declare November sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one as Brandon Shute Day in the great city of Bellevue, Nebraska. All right, the fun part of the job. Again, thank you for representing Bellevue well. Moving on to item eight, organizational matters, we have none. Item nine, approved citizen communication, we did not receive any. Item ten, there are no liquor license applications this evening. Item eleven, ordinances for adoption, third reading, we have done. Item twelve, ordinances for public hearing, second reading, we have none. And thirteen, ordinances for introduction, first reading. Thirteen A, ordinance number four zero six two, request to rezone Lot one C, except part for NRD Palm Tag subdivision, that part of Tax Lot F one A and part of Tax Lot J, southwesterly of NRD taking, and Tax Lot F one B, and part of the Tax Lot H, all located in the southwest quarter of Section eleven, township thirteen north, range thirteen east of the sixth P. M., Sarpy County, Nebraska, from BNH to ML. For the purpose of industrial development, applicant Zappo LLC, general location, Fort Crook Road South and Fairview Road. Thirteen B, ordinance number four zero six. Okay, Susan, would you read that ordinance on thirteen A, please?
Ordinance number four zero six two, an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska as provided for by Article three of ordinance number thirty-six nineteen, by changing the zone classification of land located at or about Fort Crook Road South and Fairview Road. More particularly described in Section one of the ordinance and to provide an effective date.
Okay, the second reading will, and public hearing will be held December seventh, two thousand twenty-one at six P. M. Item thirteen B, ordinance number four zero six three, request to rezone lots one and two, Marquio subdivision, replat one, being a replat of Lot one Marquio subdivision from RE to RS one twenty for the purpose of single-family residential development. Applicant is Sebastian Enzalera. General location, four twenty-one Bellevue Boulevard North. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number four zero six three, an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska as provided for by Article three of ordinance number thirty-six nineteen, by changing the zone classification of land located at or about four twenty-one Bellevue Boulevard North. More particularly described in Section one of the ordinance and to provide an effective date.
Thank you. That second reading and public hearing will be held December seventh, two thousand twenty-one at six P. M. Here in the council chambers, item thirteen C, ordinance number four zero six four, request to rezone north half of the east thirty-five point two feet of Lot two and the north half of the, of Lot three, Tiller's Hillcrest addition, from RS eighty-four to RD sixty for the purpose of duplex residential. Attention BJ Justice, general location, two-ten Galvin Road North. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number four zero six four, an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska as provided for by Article three of ordinance number thirty-six nineteen, by changing the zone classification of land located at or about two-ten Galvin Road North. More particularly described in Section one of the ordinance and to provide an effective date.
Thank you. That second reading and public hearing will be held December seventh, two thousand twenty-one at six P. M. here in the council chambers. Item thirteen D, ordinance number four zero six five, request to rezone Lot one, Fort Crook addition, from BG to ML for the purpose of outdoor storage, applicant Exarban Fence and Gate, Inc., general location, one-two-eight-zero-nine South Ninth Street. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number four zero six five, an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska as provided for by Article three of ordinance number thirty-six nineteen, by changing the zone classification of land located at or about one-two-eight-o-nine South Ninth Street. More particularly described in Section one of the ordinance and to provide an effective date.
Thank you. The second reading, public hearing will be held December seventh, two thousand twenty-one at six P. M. here in the council chambers. Item thirteen E, ordinance number four zero six six, an ordinance to redefine ward boundaries due to the two thousand twenty census. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number four zero six six, an ordinance to amend Section nine dash three of the Bellevue Municipal Code to provide for revised city council ward boundaries to repeal Section nine dash three of the Bellevue Municipal Code as heretofore existing and to provide for the effective date of this ordinance.
Thank you. The second reading, public hearing will be held December seventh, two thousand twenty-one at six P. M. here in the council chambers. Item fourteen, public hearing on matters other than ordinances, fourteen A, public hearing to receive public input and recommendations for the use of American Rescue Plan Act funds. And I will open that up for public hearing. So if there's anyone in the audience, we'll start with Rich to give us a little background on it. But if there's anyone in the audience that wants to talk regarding item fourteen, please follow Rich.
Rich Severson, Finance Director, City of Bellevue. In the packet, I think there's a pretty good explanation of what we've got. It's nice and succinct. We got eight point four million out of the one point nine trillion that the government gave out for their American Rescue Plan. We've already received four point two million of it, and we'll get the second tranche a year from the date we got the first. And that money is sitting in a local Bellevue bank with very competitive rates, so we're, we're, we're doing what we can until we put that money to work. There are eligible uses, and you, we need to be careful about what we use them for, but the categories are quite broad, and I'll just read off a couple of them to respond to the public health emergency caused by COVID nineteen. I think some of that we will try to look at how to use that in the community to help people that have been struck pretty hard with the, with the virus, and it's what, what it's done to some of the people and the businesses in the community. To respond to workers performing essential work. We've been doing some of that with, with our own public safety people all along because there were other funds that have come into us that we were able to offset some of those costs. Provision of government services and to the extent that our revenue was reduced, that is one that I'll be working pretty hard on because out of the eight million, we did have some revenues that went down. They were somewhat obscured by our aggressive annexation that took place. But we're going to do what we can to reimburse ourselves from those funds to the general fund for some of the revenues that did go down because of COVID. And then finally, one broad category that we will probably use pretty extensively, and that's to make necessary investments in water, sewer, both storm and wastewater or broadband infrastructure. And so we've got some ideas for all of these, however, the administration thought it would be a good idea to open up for public hearing in case anybody wanted to show up and, and voice some of their opinions or ideas on what we could spend some of the money on. And, you know, we're open to listening to any ideas, but again, the criteria, and we will be held to pretty tightly on what we can spend it on because the last thing we want to do is go out and spend, you know, a million dollars and then find out it didn't qualify. So we're going to avoid that mistake at all costs. And I guess just a couple of our guiding principles are, these are one-time funds. So we're gonna use them as such, and we're not going to try to invest in something that will just cause us a burden, you know, of maintenance going down the road for something that we didn't really need to do. So we will try to find the best use of those funds that don't cause us something down the road that we're not prepared to pay for. And other than that, I'll just be here to answer any questions if you have any.
So Rich, in addition to the local funds, Sarpy, I think, gets thirty-four million, so there's a chance Bellevue could see some help from the county level, the taxpayers here, just as well as the state. They've received, I can't remember how much. Do you know how much the state received?
Well, out of the three hundred and fifty billion to states and municipalities, I don't recall exactly, but yes, they, they received a significant piece, but again, we can't pick what they do with them. However, one of the things in the document talks about how we will be coordinating with other communities and, and those entities that receive the funds so that we're not duplicating and that we can best be efficient in the spending of those. And if a couple of us can get together, you know, maybe we can make something really nice instead of just trying to, everybody to work alone, building something.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for Rich? Councilman Cook?
Rich, a couple of quick questions. Is, is there gonna be someone designated from your staff to pretty much stay on top of this?
That's me.
Okay. And what, sort of tell me where we're gonna be in a month or two. I mean, we're having a public hearing tonight. What other steps are necessary or anything else that we're gonna do? I mean, when are we gonna have a package? Tentatively, a package of where here's what we heard from the community and what we heard maybe from the city and stuff like that. And here's where, here's how we're gonna spend the money, or your recommendation?
Internally, we have had discussions. We've had a small group get together and we talk about the different projects that meet the criteria. And we do have some ideas already, so we'll continue to work with, through the city administrator, putting together something that then possibly he could have three-on-three or something with the council to start talking about it before we bring it out to the, to the public again later. But we do have some ideas, and so we keep working on those and we're getting further clarification, weekly, monthly, on what is working out there so that, again, so that we don't spend money on something that we would find after an audit that we'd have to pay it back. So we will be probably working on the next couple of months trying to figure out the right projects that administration would feel comfortable presenting to you and, and the public. And we're not necessarily in a hurry. I'd rather get it right than get it fast.
Who would summon contact in, in the city if they would want information, additional information or to present something that would be considered with this money?
I think the best place to go is right to the city administrator instead of trying to, you know, send it to me or something and, and but I think that the city administrator would be the best start, and he will get us, get it to us, the group. And who knows, we might have to, for, for eight million dollars to spend, it'll be up to the administration, but maybe they will include a couple of more people in our group to have more of a suggestion on what is right for the community. Once we understand better the criteria and what we are allowed to spend it on.
Also, I, I think it's pretty critical that maybe the cities and the counties all talk together because I think you'll have maybe organizations that maybe can have an effect countywide or for surely in one city and part of the county, just to make sure that fairness, that someone's not going to two or three cities or the county and, and getting a healthy chunk of money where maybe we oversee that maybe another group dent, but we didn't, I guess what I'm saying, if someone comes up to us, say, dealing with housing issues. Well, if we give them a chunk of the money and then they go to the county or someone else and get more money, I just want to make sure we're all speaking together and we sort of have an idea what everybody's doing.
We'll try to make sure that applications, that they disclose something like that where they're getting other funding for that project. But I, I can tell you right now, off the top of my head, I can think of just a couple of things that if the revenue loss calculation works out, that's millions that comes back to the city as reimbursement out of this money. And then just some of the water project and wastewater projects. We're talking, those eat up millions at a, at a chunk. So we could be very we could keep it simple and just do the stuff that's very safe. However, we've discussed with this kind of money, it might be nice to do something that really has a little bit more of a wow factor. it has a little bit more of a wow factor and really helps the community where people can see it instead of, yep, there's a water pipe down there, you know, for eight million dollars. Something that they can see and really feel good, good about in the community and that's helping the people that it's intended to help.
Councilwoman Welch?
So Rich, this money was given us directly from the feds and is this because you raised your hand, you filled out the paperwork, you did whatever they required and then they, that's how they reimbursed us?
No, that, this decision was made by Congress.
Okay.
And this is how they decided. There's just a few of the municipalities in the state that got it directly. Several of the other smaller cities, smaller towns, all will get it through the state. So it went two ways, but we are a big enough entity that we received the eight million directly and we're responsible back to the treasury.
Okay. So is there a possibility we could get money from the state and/or the county? Or is, or this is it?
There, they have to spend theirs somehow. And I think that as we've discussed, there will be some requests or some research to find out what is available from the state and the county. To find out if there is something else that they could help us with that we can't do ourself with the eight million.
Yeah, and I'm in agreement with Council, Councilman Cook. It would be nice if all the entities would work together and maybe there's something big that is put together because all of them got together to do something good for the citizens. Thanks for bringing this to our attention.
Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Rich. I appreciate the information. My, my first question is on timing. Timeline for, does this have to be spent by a certain amount of time? Are we unlimited? You said we're going to be working on it in the next two months. But is there any kind of timelines or time parameters that we're operating under?
Yes, it has to be fully obligated by December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
So we've got plenty of
We do have some time even for big projects. And then we have a little time for it to be completed after that.
And in doing that, we can certainly use that money to leverage other funds too. Whether it be other cares or other funds or partnerships or anything else.
Yes, or you're thinking like community betterment or economic development. We do have funds in those buckets and that this could supplement. But again, I think when we get together with the internal group to, to look at it, we're going to try to, again, keep it somewhat simple, but there will be a couple of, of there, there's enough of it that I think we'll be able to help some of the community in, in different ways with some smaller amounts.
Sure. When I was thinking of leveraging, I was thinking of the county and, and the state funds for a bigger project. But I was also thinking about some of the flood mitigation, the FEMA funds, so.
And it, it just depends on
Right.
the criteria. This is COVID-related and the, the one that is a little bit broader is the broadband, the water and the wastewater. That one helps a little bit, but they believe that that was something that was tied in closely is to improve your water supplies and your broadband.
Okay. And I'm not sure who's all in the group, but I think it'd be nice if the council president or somebody from the council was a part of that process as it's moving forward. So if that can be arranged, I would like to see that.
And again, it's, we received the funds in June and I've made the first report back to the treasury. And we've had discussions, but we're still, as I've repeated, trying to find out just what other entities are doing that they believe qualifies. That will help us a lot to see what others are doing.
And I know the Douglas County Commissioners had a public hearing and they were taking input and discussing it. The Omaha City Council, others that have gotten direct funds. So, yeah, I think as we work together and we find out what other people are doing, we streamline the process and learn from what they're doing too. So.
And again, this is the first step in communicating with, with the, the public and, and you. So we can, we being the city administrator will be happy to, to listen to what, what you'd like to do with that group.
That's so nice of you to speak for him. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Rich? All right. Thank you. Is there anybody else in the public that would like to talk regarding the ARPA funds, item fourteen? Please come forward if there is. And I know there's not a lot of the public out, but people are watching from home. You can always, if you have some ideas or questions on that, if you can't find it on our website, you can always call the mayor's office or your council, council members. So make sure you get ahold of them. So if there's nobody else wanting to come forward, I will close the public hearing on item fourteen. So that moves us to fifteen B, Resolution Number two zero two one dash forty-one. A resolution requesting approval of a park expenditure for Sanitary Improvement District Number two sixty-three Brook Park, Brookside in an amount not to exceed fifty thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars. We have a motion for that. Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion. We approve Resolution Number twenty twenty-one dash forty-one.
I'll second that.
Motion by Cook, second by Welch to approve fifteen B, Resolution Number two zero two one dash four one. Is there any comments or questions on that? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item fifteen C, Resolution Number two zero two one dash four three. A resolution authorizing the mayor to sign the annual year-end certification of city street superintendent form two thousand twenty-one, verifying Robert Joseph Riggs as the city street superintendent from January one, two thousand twenty-one to December thirty-one, two thousand twenty-one. And I'll take a motion on fifteen C. Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move to approve Resolution twenty twenty-one dash forty-three.
I'll second that.
Motion by Preister, second by Welch. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item sixteen, sixteen D, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the HUD form seven zero one five dot one five, request for release of funds and certifications and to submit to HUD. And do I have a motion for sixteen D? Councilwoman Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make a motion that we approve item sixteen D as read.
Second.
Motion by Welch, second by Cook to approve sixteen D. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item sixteen E, request approval to purchase a current model year twenty twenty-two Ford Super Duty F three fifty crew cab from National Auto Fleet Group in an amount not to exceed forty-nine thousand four hundred and sixty-six dollars and seventy cents. And do I have a motion? Councilman Stenson?
Make a motion. We approve sixteen E.
Second.
Motion by Stenson, second by Cook to approve sixteen E. Any comments or questions? Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I know that we look at these pricings pretty closely and we do some comparisons. I noticed this is a twenty twenty-two. The twenty twenty-one models are going out and at this time of year, they're usually discounted. So I'm just wondering if this is through all the pricing, the best price irrespective of year, or if that might still be a consideration. Mr. Clark?
We would, we would love to buy a twenty twenty-one vehicle. They don't exist. You can't buy a Ford pickup truck or a General Motors pickup truck in a twenty twenty class. If we didn't get these orders in, we were told we may not get these big, two pickup trucks. There's one following this one. We may not get them in twenty twenty-two. So forty-nine thousand for an F three fifty is, is not a bad price. Considering where we are in the marketplace right now, and they're talking about three years from now that there will be a shortage of used vehicles because there aren't enough vehicles being produced today. So if we're going to purchase these vehicles, we need to order them today and hopefully we'll get them by the middle of next year.
Thank you for that. And as I said, you did a good job in assessing this.
Thank you.
Thanks, Doug.
I think there's actually a premium on trucks if they're available. So you're paying more for the ones that are available. So you have to order them.
It's a different market out there these days.
Any other questions, comments? Again, motion by Stenson, second by Cook to approve sixteen E. Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item sixteen F, request approval to purchase a current model year twenty twenty-two Chevrolet Colorado LT Extended Cab Truck from Beardmore Chevrolet, Inc. in an amount not to exceed thirty-two thousand five hundred and ninety-five dollars. Councilman McCaw?
I'll make a motion. We approve sixteen F.
I'll second that one.
Motion by McCaw, second by Welch. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item sixteen G, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the supplemental agreement with Alfred Benish and Company to complete remaining construction for the two thousand twenty-one concrete projects in an amount not to exceed twenty-eight thousand five hundred and eighty-eight dollars. Do I have a motion for that? Councilman Cook, let's sort of your hand right out of the court.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion. We approve sixteen G. Second.
Motion by Cook, second by Preister to approve sixteen G. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item sixteen H, approve and authorize mayor to sign contract with Judd Brothers Construction Company for the new south lift station, Brown River Lift Station improvements and forced main project in an amount not to exceed four million seven hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. And change order number one resulting in a price decrease of three hundred and fifty-one thousand three hundred and forty dollars for a revised amount of four million four hundred and twenty-three thousand six hundred and sixty dollars plus a ten percent contingency of four hundred and forty-two thousand three hundred and sixty-six dollars. Resulting in a total project cost of four million eight hundred and sixty-six thousand twenty-six dollars. Okay, do I have a motion? Councilman Cook?
Make a motion. We approve sixteen H.
I'll second that.
Motion by Cook, second by Welch. And comments or questions? I'll let Epiphany fill us in.
Yeah, sure. So we thought it was a good idea. Jim said, you know, this is a pretty big project. Maybe we should make sure that the public gets an opportunity to see what it's all about. So I'll give you a little bit of background, walk into some project justification and then just a couple of technical things for those that are interested. So as everybody knows, in two thousand nineteen, we were pretty wiped out in a, in a, in a grand geo scale in some areas in South Bellevue. In one of the particular impact areas, we have a, our industrial-sized lift station. And during that flood, the entire lift station was here, here in this picture here, you can see Paradise Lakes. The lift station actually exists on the other side of Paradise Lakes. So we had all about a foot or so on the top of the lift station. We, we had no way to bypass that period. And so we were in a situation where we were constantly reportable to the state, of course, and we were discharging a massive amount of flow into the open waterways. This next slide gives you a concept of the amount of flow that was constantly discharging during that timeframe. Until we could, the floodwaters receded, we pumped it down. We actually kind of limped it along, you know, picked up a bunch of spare parts and I basically put it together. All of that area in the blue was constantly discharging into, into, into the, the water. So that's all open and raw sewage. So we knew, and I was, you know, as I was watching the entire events unfold, you know, my gut was just saying, never again, we aren't going to ever do this again. You know, one of these once in a lifetime, this will never happen. We had, you know, precursors in two thousand ten, eleven, and then in two thousand nineteen. And I think that it was, it's not a conversation of this will never happen again. It's when will this happen again? So we developed and designed a mitigation project to rehabilitate the existing lift station, expand the service area, which would be everything there down in green. So that lift station will serve all of that capacity and the new lift station will actually create a closed loop system so that all of that area that it services there in the blue will be completely contained and would never discharge into open waters again. So those are the objectives essentially that we're, we're going to service, service that entire area. No sewer overflowing into open waterways again, increase the reliability of service. The existing lift station kind of leaved a lot to, to, to be wanted in terms of, you know, its effectiveness and reliability. And we also walked into this designing a wash and wear. I call it wash and wear type of, of technology of the system. So with submersible pumps where we have control panels that literally just disconnect. You know, we were middle of the night trying to rip wires out, pull pumps in a dangerous situation that we never wanted to be in again. So this kind of new, new system that we've designed helps us be more of a, we unplug it and then as floodwaters recede, essentially clean it up, mop it up and we're ready to go again. And that area that it services is never discharging because technically it's underwater anyways and no service is happening. So. This is just an overview of the site itself. So that Brown River Lift Station is the existing site. That's the site that we are rehabilitating, turning into the wash and wear situation like I talked about. And then that new site actually sits up out of that area on higher ground. And that's where the entire blue area that we just looked at is going to, is going to end up. So that's the impact point of that new area. It will become a forced main, forced underground there. So it's completely contained and it's not discharging in a gravity system. And that's, that's basically what that looks like. So we're going to maintain existing easements. We're only, we only, which we're already on council for approval, I think a few, a few meetings ago. There's just a little bit of bump out that we're going to do to fit fencing a little bit better on, on that down area. But we saved by utilizing existing city property, existing easements where some pipeline already was. And just got really creative on how to value engineer this project. Some details, you know, I don't know that anybody's into, into this technical part of it. But we rehabilitated that existing site by taking an existing building and we're structurally reinforcing it to turn it into a, a wet well system. So instead of, you know, wiping everything out and building it new, we are taking a look at what do we have existing? How can we save some money on dewatering? The, the constant theme here was how can we save some money and do this, do less with more? Which you see in the change order that right away is up for, as soon as we execute the contract, we want to deduct change order right away. Just constantly thinking about how to engineer this more effectively. Donna brought up a good point about, originally I had asked the engineers to spec a natural gas generator. It would be a first for, for us. We do appreciate the reliability and the clean, you know, source of, of, of fuel. But after looking at the, all of the numbers, we were able to downsize the generator. downsize the generator, which downsizes the actual carbon footprint. And I got that environmental report for you too, I can forward to you. So we, we looked at downsizing it and we are gonna um, request to go with that diesel. And due to creating the, the smaller generator, we can k- keep the carbon footprint smaller. So you know, that was even a cost savings upfront, and that's one of the largest light items there in that, that change, that negative change deduct out of the gate. Um, but yeah, I wanted to just answer any questions. I know that it's, it's a little bit technical. Um, and it's been, we've been working on it for a little bit over a year. I think a point I probably blew by is we finally did get approval of our, our FEMA funds for it. So almost seven hundred thousand dollars will be applying to that. And that was quite the uphill battle. As you could imagine, everybody in two thousand nineteen was fi- fighting for that. And we have been fighting tooth and nail. Um, thanks to Karen, thanks to the folks in, in the Public Works Admin too, but um, we've got that applied and we, that'll be a direct offset to these project costs as well. Um, we've been doing really good with um, you know, watching how we're, 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 we're s- we're spending our money, our expenses, keeping our expenses down. Um, kind of keeping track of what we got in capital improvement projects and um, you know, we're not, we're not looking um, to break the bank with this. We've, we've been saving our funds back and so, you know, I defer to, to rich a little bit, but we, we've got cash reserves as you, as you've seen on your last report. And that's, that's our intent is to not get to a, a low level in cash reserves, but utilize our cash reserves to, to make this happen with FEMA funding too. So questions?
Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. And Epiphany, thank you. You're the at least third example tonight of how the taxpayers' funds are being used efficiently, effectively, and doing more with less is, it's another good example. So thank you for pointing that out. You answered my first question, and that was, why would we put another lift station down in a low area? But you pointed out that this will be moved higher, the main portion of it, and yet utilizing some of the existing infrastructure.
Right. In the low area, I think it's important to, to point out as well that we still have plans to, to build that out. And the folk, the, the folks of Bellevue really still do want to build down there. You know, there's a um, uh, you know, so deadiness system altogether was not an option. You know, to, to still have serviceability, still have sanitary service down there. Um, it's just how can we contain that service? You know, to where if it was flooded again, um, it's not discharging. Obviously, nobody's gonna be using it because it's, it's uh, underwater. But, and then how can we quickly recover without having to continually rebuild, rebuild and, and, and use uh, that, those monies? Seems like spending a lot of money for nothing, a- as you know, it's so. So we really made sure that all that area was gonna have service uh, to complete build out even more than what it does today. And then um, that wash and wear type system, so.
And I do like looking long-term and looking at prevention and for the future, not just the immediacy. So thank you for that too. The other thing, this is a lift station. M U D operates a treatment station. Could you talk about the difference?
So um, it's been quite a years back, over a decade. Um, we decided to get out of the treatment business altogether. And um, a, a large amount of our flows, so not just this flow, but other connection points in the system um, throughout the city. Um, our final discharge point is at the Papio Treatment Plant, um, which is downstream from us. And we don't own it or operate it, but we stay in constant communication. Um, and they have their own mitigation processes based on what happened in the flood. Um, you know, we're, we're at the table helping, you know, giving advice as much as we can. But we are focused forward on making sure that everything that happens within Bellevue's system is contained, so that we're not compounding to a problem. Um, we know that they, they're gonna have to deal with problems in a flood environment too, but the, the Papio Treatment Plant is its own, is its own entity and, and managed by Omaha actually, and owned by Omaha. Um, but all our flow will be contained and, and, and we'll make it to the plant, you know, so. So this was the one part I felt like in the infrastructure that was compromised and, and we worked hard to develop a plan. But yeah, that, does, that, we are dependent on them to service it.
Thank you very much.
Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. Could we go back to that, the screen right before this? I don't know who has control. Nope, no, you passed it. This one, yeah.
Uh-huh.
So there you say new south lift station. Can you sort of just sort of, in my mind, pinpoint where that's at? Is that still down on the bottoms?
Nope. So the Brown River is what, what, what we used to call our south lift station. Um, we decided that was too confusing. So anyhow, the new south lift is, if you're standing at the old one, you literally look um, up the, up the top of the hill.
Is there homes there?
No. No, this was all an existing easement and access. It's, it's even, um, so we had just built one over on Twenty-second at the end of Twenty-second Street that discharges eventually into this one. It's got even more um, room. So that one was pretty close to homes. And I know that there was a lot of concern about odor control and what do they look like? What do, what, what is this? It's a tiny little CMU block building. We could dress it up, paint it however, you know, to make it look um, fine. But it's a very small imprint. Um, I, I, it's even further out than, you know, it's in backyards and it's in an area that was kind of overgrown. That's kind of an eyesore. So it'll be all cleaned up. Um, a road uh, uh, leading down to it and um, I haven't heard anybody have any reservations about where it's gonna be at. But so far as what it looks like, it's almost exactly the same type that's at Twenty-second Street.
So a small building?
Yeah, it's a s- tiny little building. It's enough for you to stand in. Um, there's control panels and a, a couple actuating valves in there and two pipes that run out of it. And that's all you see on the top side.
Okay. So it's just, it's just moving sewage? And there will be no smell, no concerns, everything's pretty much underground?
It's, it's completely contained. So di- and unlike um, it'll have, it has an air relief valve on that we put carbon filters on it, just like we did at Twenty-second Street. And it's, it's all underground and contained. So it's not like, not like Roman times where it's flowing. No, but it's, it, I, I don't think that, we haven't had any issues with the Twenty-second Street, and that's even closer proximity to most people's front doors. Whereas this is um, in an area that's undevelopable and the backyards. Um, you know, those lots are not gonna change, so.
Well, thank you for presenting this material.
Any other questions? Councilwoman Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, first off, great job. Thank you for explaining this, because this is probably more than most of us ever want to know about um, sewage. But the question is, the Brown River Lift Station, that is still there, correct?
Yes, the site is still there. Yep.
And the new south lift station is a brand-new lift station?
That's correct.
Correct? So you were talking about that there was equipment or items that you used to kind of like recycle them. Did that come from?
Yes, so it come from the existing. So the one that we call Brown River is what we used to call the south lift. That was the station that was wiped out in the flood. We came in and salvaged everything we can, and it's still operating of the small industrial area down there. And some of the build-out that's taking place as we speak on some of the mobile home parks. Um, it's, we're limping along where it used to have three uh, you know, pumps. It's barely operating on one. We, there's no communications to it. So um, we just took everything out of our store shed essentially and tried to get it up and operable. Took uh, you know, something that was probably a million dollars to do and did it with twenty thousand.
Okay.
But it's limping along. But we were working on this project the whole time.
So I see Rich over there clapping because you're saving us money. So.
Um, it's not reliable.
Um, so on these, Epiphany, do they have a, a, a life that, I mean, a certain lifespan that they have? Or typically you have to redo these because you have some major catastrophe that happens and now we gotta redo these?
So I have lift stations that are seventy years old. Some of them seventy years old. I literally um, have one that I'm dealing with right now um, over by Bluff Street where we have rebuilt the housing and components. I mean, you know, the, the vent is that they don't make things the way that they used to is, is very true and a lot of different things. But um, when parts and things become obsolete, we have been working over the last decade to try to standardize some of the things that we do so that we're not hunting and pecking and oh, by the way, this thing's thirty years old and they don't make that part anymore. Um, there is a useful life to these things. Um, and it kind of depends on, on the amount of service, right? So if it's a small service area, um, it's a smaller pump, it's a, it's a different type of system. There's submersibles above grounds. Um, these that we're changing to are submersibles, would tend to have a lower maintenance costs and um, a longer shelf life. So the ones that are there um, off the top of my head, the pumps themselves, probably thirty years. You know, and we just constantly rebuild components of them.
So this new one that we're, the new south lift station that has been put on the agenda, that's a brand-new operation.
And that is gonna be at a higher level so that if or when we have another hundred-year flood come through,
which we had two in a couple of years.
Right.
Um, we can handle all the
Yep.
the stuff that comes through.
Wiped out again. Right. It's out of that area altogether.
You, you teach me a lot about things I never knew anything. So thank you.
Any other questions? Comments? Fifteen minutes ago, we were talking about Rich putting four point two million dollars in the bank. Now we're talking about taking four point four out. So that's just your life, isn't it? That's right. But thanks for saving us money.
Yeah, infrastructure is expensive. It is.
All right. So we do have a, uh, thank you. We do have a motion by Cook, second by Welch to approve sixteen H. Um, please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item sixteen I, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the community development block grant funding approval agreement in an amount of three hundred and thirty-five thousand three hundred and sixty dollars. We have a motion for that. Councilwoman Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Make a motion that we approve item sixteen I.
Second.
Motion by Welch, seconded by Stenson. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item seventeen is the administration reports. Uh, comments must be limited to items on the current reports. Those reports are given at the first council meeting of the month and they were gone over last meeting. So no other questions. I'll uh, move to eighteen, closed session. We have none and adjournment is nineteen. So I have a motion to adjourn. Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I make a motion, we adjourn.
Motion by Cook, second by Preister. Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Enjoy the last couple hours of good weather.